Okay, let's open our meeting.
All right, six thirty-one.
Six thirty-one. And as usually, first thing, I will accept the motion to waive reading of the remote reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? In favor?
Nope.
Aye, or you could go right.
I'll call if you don't mind, yeah.
Dick Williams, aye. Tim Norold, aye.
Sean Moore, aye.
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
Norm, aye.
Oh, welcome Marilyn.
Thank you.
Okay. We have minutes from September ninth, planning board meeting.
I'll make the motion to accept in wait the minutes from September ninth.
And I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion?
Um, I just want to find out, did we get the hundred and fifty dollars that was owed to us?
Uh, yes.
We did.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Um, Norm, I'm without the packet on here, can we just use this, or you want to try to get the packet?
No.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't load the packet up here.
Yeah, I'll get it, we'll do that.
Marilyn and Sean have the packet in front of them?
Ah, shh.
No, I have it. I have it, I picked it up, Dave, and I also signed that mat.
Oh, you did, thank you for doing that, maybe I can get it to them.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for leaving it for me.
You're welcome, uh, never mind, I'll get the, I have the packet right here, Norm, sorry. The technology.
Okay, any further discussion on the minutes? In favor, roll call again.
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Norold, aye.
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
Sean Moore, aye.
Oh, Anderson, aye. Oh, is it me?
If I may, if I may through the chair, Norm, could you, uh, just to make it so no one's interrupting each other, just, uh, do a name call, that way we can respond in time?
If I can, if I can remember everybody's name.
Okay, you, you just call me dude.
Okay, notices, anybody, anything of interest on Holden?
What names?
I would trust in Holden, no disrespect either.
Daily Road, that was, that was interesting.
Oh, yeah, my father was all over that one.
Yeah. And... That, no, I'm all set, interesting.
Okay, no ARs this time around, so next thing is the Wheeler Road Solar, we have an application.
Yeah, let me see if the application's...
Site plan approval. And, uh, we talked with Dave, I guess he feels the application is complete. I, I am just a little bit curious, I'm looking at page one of the application, and the place for signature of owner is blank.
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'm a taxpayer, I'll bring it.
Bitch, considering it's a town of Rutland.
Yeah, okay, uh...
I don't know if that really makes any difference. Except that it's also listed as Mike Nicholson.
I think if you look at it...
Mike signs as a town administrator, as owner, says town property.
This is not correctly, the applicant is Rennie Friedman.
Right.
Then the next line below, signature of owner other than applicant is Michael J. Nicholson.
Oh.
So, um, I think he signed on behalf of the town.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Sorry about that, that's really...
I don't see the applicant here to just have a brief discussion of this, I mean, this is not a hearing, this is just to set the schedule, and also to get authorization to send this to Quinn.
Okay. You were expecting someone?
I was, actually, yeah, I was expecting Jeff Brandt, he's the senior, um, senior project manager.
Oh, for TRC?
For TRC, he's been involved in some of the other solar projects going back a ways. I did make him aware of this matter, and I sent him out the, uh, the agenda.
There are no women involved in this up on the top of the hill like that.
Thing is, we've looked at this before.
Yep.
So... Um...
And...
I guess...
The only thing I, oh...
And they're using a town access road to get to it, correct?
Yes, off of Wheeler Road.
Yeah, where they go the tanks, they're gonna use that to access to solar fields.
Yeah, and there is still, in my opinion, enough room be- between the tanks and the, uh, houses on Wheeler Road, uh, for dispatch center.
Okay.
Well, Wright Hill being the highest hill in Rutland.
Oh, yeah.
Between here and the, and, uh, the Berkshires.
Okay, nice place for an tenant.
Exactly. And I was very, I, I'm quite pleased with the layout, the way they have it, and everything that is up here. I, uh...
They've kept the buildings way off the road, that's for sure, so there's no, you know, the, the air conditioning, it's always been...
Yeah.
I think that, that T at the end is where all the buildings are gonna go, again, I can't...
I think so too.
So...
And to me, that'd be ideal, there are no houses, except, uh, Donner and Dicker across the street just below that, but I think that's far enough away that they won't hear it.
Yep.
So...
I don't see an issue with sending it to Quinn to have them review it.
Yep.
I agree.
Is, is there, Dave, was there more of a package other than just the drawing?
No, it's just right here.
Well, that's the whole package?
Yeah.
Okay.
You might, you wanna take that tonight?
Yeah, I'll take it.
We want the whole of them.
Just, I'll take it, look it over, that's it. Cause Quinn's gonna do the same thing with the review, so... Do you need a motion, Norm, to send this to Quinn?
Uh, just ho- hold on. Um... I don't necessarily see it as a problem, but the applications, and the application for site plan approval, the title on their book is application for special permit.
Uh, yeah, I, um, just wanted to show you something, see if you wanna just validate this, there were some contradictions. I, oh, well, six oh three happened back and forth with Jeff Brandt, who's not here unfortunately, but I think, I think the answer is probably under this exemption section, if you want.
Cause it's town property.
If you agree that, that this applies, then we'll just take it as...
Oh. Got it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Definitely.
All right, fair enough, thank you.
Definitely. Okay, so... I don't see a problem with it, so, uh, I don't see any problem with either sending it off to Quinn, or, uh, scheduling a date for a public hearing.
I think it's, I think I was looking at October thirteenth as a possible date, or the second meeting in October.
Let's see, is this this year, twenty twenty?
Uh, I would, if I may through the chair, I, I would prefer to have it go to Quinn, then after we review, uh, what he submits, and then bring it to public hearing, if that's doable.
I, I was kinda thinking that that October thirteenth is a little quick.
Okay.
I don't know, what does anybody else think?
I like the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so schedule that.
It's kinda one of these things where, you know, Quinn is usually pretty good on this thing, but, you know, we don't really know. Particularly if we don't get it in until, say, the twelfth, or on the thirteenth itself.
Yeah, all right, so Quinn's authorized in the twenty-seventh, so then if there's any back and forth between the time Quinn gets it, it's the twenty-seventh, and the applicant and Quinn can work together.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we need that many in the formal motion or not.
No, I, I just have that as a note, so...
So... Okay. Anything else on Wheeler Road?
October twenty-seventh, you said possibility.
No, October twenty-seventh, definite.
A definite?
Yeah.
Okay.
So... Okay. So it kinda sounds like these things are maybe getting ready to move, so...
Yeah, well, I, I was told today that, that the state has got no money for, you know, passing out, if you get it, if you get certain things from the state, you know, S-Racks or whatever, you know, some, some kind of a... There's not much money there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But, they're, they're noted for having a lot of backup, so maybe they'll come up with the money. Yeah, I, I can only hope.
Well, like I said, the, the grid's gonna be the toughest thing to get through.
Yeah.
And you know from the RDIC how that's getting held up, so...
Yes, yeah.
I can imagine this'll be another one.
I agree.
But, uh, let's, let's go through the process and get it done.
I, I'd rather be on first base or third base, we're trying a lot of the thing, you know, let it, let it rip and...
Yeah.
Who's on first?
That would be, uh, TRC right now.
What's on second?
I don't know.
I guess, a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, send the documentation for Wheeler Road, uh, from TRC, including drawings for site plan review, for them to review and get back to us. For Soul Systems, so... For, uh, for the, what do they call this, the Soul Systems LLC, Central Tree Solar Project.
Three, five bucks.
Yeah.
Cause they didn't know where they were gonna put it at first.
Yeah, okay.
I'll...
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, in favor, roll call, Dick?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim?
Tim Norold, aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay. Uh, Maple Hill Estates, I don't think we have too much of anything on that, we...
No, um, so I, I had a reach to town council this morning to see if they had a follow-up on the tri-party. Town council responded about four o'clock, indicating that they will have it to you later today or tomorrow morning, so I guess probably tomorrow morning, at this rate.
Yeah, so we'll put it on the thirteenth?
Uh, yeah, we'll just bring it back again.
Okay.
Now, let me ask you this, what if she says she has no particular issue with it, can that be communicated to the board? And the board can assign it?
Cause we already voted on it, correct?
No.
Now, we gotta, we gotta have it in a meeting and then vote on it.
Yeah, we have the vote on it.
Fine. I mean, I thought there was, there might have been a theory that if it's like a known work product, and there's no substantial difference to that...
Uh, un- unless someone would like to make a motion, let's say right now, uh, that, on the condition that town council has no issues with the tri-party, we are agreeable to endorse it.
I'm okay with that, especially since it's been reviewed by town council. She has no issues, I, I can go ahead, cause we reviewed the heck out of the thing.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion...
Oh.
Sorry, Sean, I interrupted you.
No, you said I'll go ahead, so that pretty much says that you are making the motion, so I just said I second that, that's all.
Okay, yeah, I'm making the motion to, uh, conditionally, uh, approve the tri-party agreement, um, with the condition that, uh, town council has no comments.
No issues.
No issues, no comments, yeah, on the tri-party.
Okay. So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Nope.
Hearing on, roll call, well, Dick?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim?
Tim Norold, aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
Norm, aye.
So let me just, David, if it, if it gets everything's good, we just gotta stop in and sign it then?
Yeah, I think what I'll do in that case is leave it with the town clerk, cause it has to be notarized.
Okay.
And then let you folks know, I'll give it to one either, and Damian, then they can notarize it as people come in and sign.
Okay, good, all right.
I find it hard to believe she isn't gonna have some comment or correction.
Yeah.
You know? Uh, okay. Uh, and I think that's all on Maple Hill.
Yeah, yes, we didn't get any engineering reports for this time period.
Right, and, uh, have not heard anything further on the conservation restriction?
No, it, no, it's just, uh, the conservation restrictions, as we know, it's with the Conservation Commission to review it somehow, to do some recommendations and...
Also, it's going through town council for them too, I believe.
I believe afterwards, I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
And we are gonna get a copy of that anyway, it's gonna be notified.
Okay, moving right along. Bryce Lemon Estates. Uh, again, no reports, other than we have the, uh, paling report from Yankee Engineering, which means a whole lot of nothing to make.
Well, that's yours, sorry. Did we, did we, did we get any feedback on, from Bryce Lemon, the water, and all those issues that were brought up last meeting? And with the, and again, I forget the road, I just remember the berm that was put in the road to divert the water, yeah, all that. Did we get anything back?
I, I'm sorry, um... I didn't get a chance to distribute this to the board, okay, here it is, it's, uh... So this is from, uh, Blair to Nathan?
Guess it's not a...
Brack, and somebody else. It says, it is our opinion that we cut back the pavement to be consistent with how we have left it on past subdivisions. If there's a problem with the grass growing due to the pavement underneath the grass plot, we'll come back and cut, cut at the pavement at, at our expense. And then you got the response from Ty Lee, where, um, Ty Lee is thanking Clea for that response.
That's it.
All right.
That's it, um, so he's thanking her for that response, and then there's nothing after that.
Put it in the, uh, file and see what happens.
Meanwhile, there's someone waiting to get in on this, Sean Mead.
Okay.
Who hasn't been admitted yet, I will now do that.
Okay.
Unless you want something else on it.
Just to say, by the way, the phase one is totally paved, if anybody has...
Okay, that was my curiosity.
I gotta go and check out the rail trail, see if they started working on that.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't get down there.
Yeah, neither did I.
Yeah, cause it looks like town meeting's gonna get put off even further, I don't think November ninth's gonna happen, or December, November ninth.
Uh, let me see, he is from Bryce Lemon, right?
Right.
Uh...
He's been a lot into the meeting, so we're not talking about Bryce Lemon Estates?
What's his first name?
Sean.
Sean?
Sean.
Uh, Sean Mead, any, uh, questions, comments on Bryce Lemon?
He's muted right now. Sean, can you hear us?
Uh, vaguely, I can kinda hear you guys, I didn't get a chance to get in, we were, uh, waiting.
Well, we just started on Bryce Lemon, so we got you in just as we started to talk about Bryce Lemon.
Okay. I don't have any questions right now, I'm still waiting to hear back from a few people on the, few things that have been going on, I've started talk with, uh, Joe Buckley and the select board.
About the, about the homeowners agreement?
Yeah, about that, and also the, where they stand with the road acceptance and things like that.
Okay, we still have a lot more information to get from Mr. Blair, as far as road acceptance, we don't have as-built yet. Uh, we certainly still have to have a...
Inspection too.
A major inspection, uh, kind of an inch by inch, I'll call it, uh, inspection, together with our engineers, uh, there's been nothing scheduled for that.
Clea's in a minute.
And we haven't even gotten a formal request.
That's what I was gonna ask, we don't even have a formal request yet.
Right, which, that goes to selectmen first, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so... And since it goes to selectmen first, who knows when we'll get it?
Yeah, we haven't been notified from the select board yet, so...
Yeah. Okay, I guess, unless anybody else has something? The only other thing, I think I mentioned it, at our last meeting, or last meeting, I did take a drive up to the top of phase three, or close to the top of phase three.
You didn't slide down the hill, though?
I didn't slide down the hill, but, I don't know, my, my, my only impression was, what a moonscape, uh...
And, didn't we, didn't we not set, I thought, I don't know if it was in the regs or not, any slope over fifteen percent, they, you know, had to be only X number of acres?
I don't believe so, not on Bryce Lemon, anyway.
Not, I know it was on Noble, but I saw Bryce Lemon, I thought in our open space regs, it says fifteen percent.
I, I think that is...
What is that?
Maybe somebody requires, in the open space...
Just the open space itself, nothing, but it's the open space?
Not over a certain amount, over fifteen percent grade or whatever, in the open space. But the thing is, he's got way more open space.
But, is it, see, that's, that's where I'm torn, is it that, the open space? I, see, I thought it, open space subdivision, not open space land, set aside.
Now, the, the, the bylaw would refer to the open space land.
But why would we care about that? It's, it's where they're building the houses, and fifteen percent grade is a...
Oh, yeah.
It's a fairly steep, and I thought we had just, well, anyway...
I'm looking right now to see if I can find anything. Come on.
Anyway, all I can say is, if we ever had a hurricane come up and dump about seven or three inches of rain, then these, they'd be, they'd be scraping main street to get the mud off.
Yeah, I, uh, when I went up there, not that long ago, I couldn't believe, we did have, I think it was a half an inch or three quarters of an inch, and they did remake some of the strength that did get washed out.
Anyway.
All right, well...
Anything more on Bryce Lemon?
Uh, here's the open space requirements, minimum is thirty-three percent, uh, conservation slop, it says Conservation Commission areas with slopes greater than fifteen percent, areas of dedicated space in excess of minimum, area may contain any percents of boarding, that's the only thing I see for fifteen percent.
Okay.
Slops greater than fifteen, it's minimum, open space requirement, no more than fifty percent, may consist of boarding vegetated wetlands on a jurisdiction, Rutland Conservation Commission or areas with slopes greater than fifteen percent. And that's for these open space standard, you know?
That's the way I look at it, at fifteen percent, you're not gonna have wetlands.
Pretty hard to...
Yes.
It's a good spring.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Anything want Bryce Lemon? Then onward to Bear Hill two.
Okay, uh, Blair is now gonna join the meeting, it being admitted as a guest. Okay, the audio, okay, he's here in this meeting, Norm?
Okay, can you hear us, Clea?
I can hear you guys, I'm so sorry, my car broke down, I was tied up at the office. That's what I get for buying a new car, right?
Okay.
Hopefully it was American.
It's a Cadillac, it's American.
Get up to the old baker and beat him up.
I did, it's going to baker's, they're towing it.
Or I guess it's Duran now.
Yep, Duran, yep.
Well, uh, I, I guess, um, first, I'm just gonna say, Clea, uh, let's have you state your case.
So, did you guys talk about Maple Hill, and Bear Hill, and Bryce Estates, I mean, and all those?
Yep.
Okay, so you're on, uh, the, so, I sent an email, and I don't have it, I didn't print it, so I don't have it with me, and I showed you guys the, the, um, uh, condition that said, it's something about connecting to Bear Hill and Grizzly Drive and all that, I mean, I'm not arguing the intent, I know what the intent was. The intent was to have the road go through Brittenell Estates out to, um, out to, uh, Brittenell Drive, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing that with you, so, I know what your intent was, and I've, I've lived by it, I'm not arguing with you about that, but I am trying to get a little bit of help from you, the DCR, out of the blue, denied my variance for, um, the, the crossings, the wetland crossings in, uh, Brittenell Estates. DEP approved them, uh, Army Corps approved them, the Rutland Concom approved them, and out of the blue, DCR denied them, and with COVID, they got forty-five days at, till the end of time to, to, to have a hearing, I mean, it, I can't, I've called in Boston, I'm emailing their lawyers, I've appealed it, but I can't get that through, and my financing is in place, everything's ready to go, I had the contractors all lined up, I figured, and they gave no indication at any of the MIPA hearings, any of the hearings that we had on the variance at the DCR, they gave no indication that they were upset or wanted any changes whatsoever. So, I, I'm in a spot now, I don't know, you know, really, what to do, um, other than, uh, uh, what do you call it? Try to get, you know, push them, and I'm, I'm pushing them, but in the meantime, I have Bear Hill two that I would really, I wanted to build the both of them at the same time, so I'm pleading that by the time I'm ready to, I mean, it's gonna take at least till spring now to get a house started at all in there, I mean, I gotta build the road, grade all the lots, put in the water, put in the sewer, put in the drain, pave the road, gravel the road, I mean, that's definitely, you know, I'm not gonna pave it until April, so I can't really do anything until then, but, and so, and I hope to have my, my issues worked out with the DCR so that I can build the other road at the same time, but if I don't, and I can't, cause it says occupancy permits, I don't know if you mean even build the road, or start it, or do anything, so I guess my, my question to you guys is, if for some reason I can't get that road built in time to start building houses, is there a way that I could fix up that other entrance down by Brittenell that was originally gonna be the exit there, to, to satisfy, uh, uh, somehow cleaning up that condition? Don't all, don't we all speak at once?
Yeah, we're thinking, we're thinking.
Okay.
Fix up, fix up what exit?
The one, the temporary one that goes up.
The temporary one?
The one that you're using now.
Yeah.
Yes.
But Clea, aren't you built out to what's there now, I mean, all the houses go right up to the edge, don't they? To the pumping station?
That's correct, yes, I'm built out as far as lots go in Bear Hill.
How about, in Bear Hill two, you...
Everything's built, and in fact, some of the houses on the other side of the bridge are in Brittenell, but that's a moot point, I'm not gonna discuss that.
Yeah, yeah.
But this, this is about Bear Hill two?
Yes. And... If you remember, we, we can... If you remember, we, we conceded, I think, two houses
Yes, yes.
Out on Arrowhead.
Oh, there he is. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, we don't have a camera here, do we?
No.
Oh, okay.
Can I come up there? Are you guys all up there?
Not all, no.
Oh, if I had known, I'd have showed up. I have a mask.
So, I guess, Clea, what I'm, I'm trying to figure out, if you're at capacity, what are you asking?
Well, I wanna build Bear Hill Two, I have, I have, because of that condition, and I've, you know, obviously respected it, I mean, I, I, I can't build Bear Hill Two unless I build Bear Hill, uh, Brittenell Estates, and the road
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about up and around over on, uh, the, oh, I know what you're talking about.
The horseshoe, the little horseshoe there.
Yeah.
So, is that other driveway still there that goes down to Brittenell?
Yeah, it's still there, yeah. But part of the conditions was, you had to get a second egress to start Bear Hill Two.
Yeah, well.
With the Neil Viner request, I remember that one well.
Yeah, I know it, but I'm just thinking, could use that driveway.
I don't think it's in condition to do that.
No.
Car way up it maybe, but it, it does not go.
Well, now there's a house where it is, Norm, isn't there, a house that's blocking that?
I think so.
Yeah, you can't even use that anymore.
Oh, okay.
My real question here is, if for some reason I don't have, it worked out with the DCR by, you know, let's say, the time I need an occupancy permit for a house, is there something that I can do to that other exit to make it palatable for it to be used until, I, I expect that, I mean, they, they are, I think they are putting me off, but, just on purpose, but, I expect that I'll, I should be able to work it out with them in the next six to eight months, I mean, it's already been six months since they turned me down.
How many houses are you talking about, Clea, on, on Arrowhead?
Okay, so there's two, there's two that exist already, the ones that were there previously. Um, there's, there's two that I built that are, you guys gave me the okay to build. And then, um, I think there's a total of, uh, twelve more lots. I think there were fourteen, I mean, sixteen lots in there, and there's four of them that are, you know, already done, so I think there's twelve. I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm fairly certain it's twelve.
Norm, I wouldn't have a problem doing that if I got Seth and Nick to buy into it and Chief Buckley. I, I just want the, the safety side of it covered.
If, if I may, yeah, if, does Clea, uh, you, do you really need permission from us to, to work on that, since you still own the land? I mean, whether you clean up the road yourself, the final outcome is really all we're worried about. So for us to accept, accept the road, would it matter?
Yeah, Sean, there's conditions in Bear Hill Two that, um, indicated that, that you've gotta have a second egress out of Bear Hill One before Bear Hill Two could be built, and that was in the order of conditions for Bear Hill Two, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and he's, he's talking about down by the pump station, right, that little
No, no, he's, no, he's talking about by the hill on Arrowhead.
Okay, that's going down, that's going down the hill onto, that comes out on Brittenell.
No, it's a little horseshoe.
He's talking about, there's a, there's a horseshoe back on what we called Bear Hill for years, and, uh, it's, it's Arrow, Arrow Court, I think it's called, or Arrow Stream.
Arrowhead, Arrowhead way.
Yeah, it's got like a yellow house, is that right, if I can remember? Yeah, okay, so I remember. I, I thought it continued to go, I mean, almost like cart path type, you know, not a real road, but I thought there was like a passageway leading all the way down the hill.
There was, it was Mr. Michelonis and, uh, they used to have that, you know, I know it well, because I was gonna buy the house twenty-one years ago. But that, that, if I'm not mistaken, that path is gone because there's a, there was a house put in place of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the old driveway you're talking about, Sean?
Yeah.
That's pretty cooked, yeah.
Okay.
So, we're back
I'm okay.
I, I don't have a prob, I mean, I know Neil's gonna kill me for this, but, I don't, I don't have a problem if, if I get the three chiefs buying in that it's not a safety or a concern for the town to do it.
I'm certainly, I certainly have no problem asking them about it, you know, just
I mean, I wanna know what the other board, I'm, I'm usually pretty strict on this, but, twelve houses, I, I mean, you're talking about another twelve cars.
Yeah, there's already fifty-eight houses using it now, you know what I mean?
I'm, I'm just wondering if there are some other kinda guarantees we can get on this.
Well, if Brittenell Estates isn't built in twelve months, it's rescinded. Don't cry, Clea. It's only been on the books since seventy-six.
I know, I know, that's why I always wanna get it done.
I mean, what are you looking for, Norm? Asphalt and that bike, that, uh, that out, that output, so it, so
Have a pulse of five million dollar bond to build a flyover, the wetlands on the Brittenell Drive.
I'll tell you what, the, the bond for Bear Hill, thanks to Mike Sullivan, the bond for Bear Hill was five million dollars.
Wow.
Imagine that, had to put up a five million dollar bond to build Bear Hill.
Yeah, but back then, the, uh, the banks didn't give you a hard time about it either.
No, but I'll tell you what, they'd make me put up five million today to do it.
Yeah, and they'd hold that against your credit rating too, like they didn't used to in the past.
Exactly.
Um, the only condition, Norm, that I'd, I'd want is, that, that road out to Brittenell, roads gotta be in a better condition. You know, like, right now, it's just, it's, it's dirt, and again, I've driven it with a truck, I can do it, but, you know, to, to give and take, I'd probably want that asphalted. So, it could be plowed by, uh, by Chief Buckley's crew.
What about millings? I mean
It's already, it's already got millings on it.
Yeah.
No, it has
A new coat of
It doesn't have millings, Norm, it has ABC, that, it's asphalt, concrete, and bricks, they're all
Brick, yeah.
They're all crushed, so, and I mean, that, now it's got some potholes. I, I would think that, you know, at the very, if I don't have that other road permitted and, and started by, by then, by the time I start to get a house in there, don't forget, I'm not gonna build all twelve houses in a year, man, well, maybe I will, but I, the way houses are selling now, I might, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, well, I tell you
I think you will, Clea.
I can't keep them on the shelf, I mean, the phone's ringing off the hook, but, um, which is fine, I mean, it's been, I'll take it. But I, I just, you know, so, it won't, it won't, it's not gonna, I don't think, it's not gonna hit all at once, but I would, I would be willing to throw some millings down because eventually, you do want me to, um, to make that, you know, road grass. And, and it's, and it's gonna, right now, I'm, I'm talking to, um, Joe Buckley about, uh, putting a water and sewer line down it to feed what used to be Bear, uh, Brittenell North, but now Norm threw another name at me of Hilltop Estates, which I'm gonna be getting in front of you guys with pretty quick here, it's just gonna be a private drive, but, anyways, I, I'm gonna be running these couple utilities down there, no power, but, um, water and sewer, uh, to feed that other area, so, after that
Oh, to go under Brittenell to Hilltop Estates, Clea?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put sewer and water, uh, as long as, you know, up, down that easement, and then turn left and come up and, uh, feed those houses up there.
Well, if that happens, Norm, that road's gonna stay as an access for ZPW to do work.
It'll just be
It won't go back to grass.
It'll have to be an easement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it can be grass.
Okay.
Well, if you're gonna put something down, it needs to go down fairly soon, in my opinion, so it can get tightened, uh, before snow season.
Well, I would, I would recommend, I mean, I'm not gonna build any houses there till next year, anyway, if I do, and, and I would recommend, if you're gonna use, if you're gonna use millings, that the best time to put that is not now, the stuff just doesn't get hard. It's too, yeah, well, if I put it on in the spring, it, it'll, it'll harden up nice, you know? But I, that's why I say, if I can't have that other road ready by that time, I'm willing to put some millings on that and clean that up, and I don't know if you want me to cut that edge down where the, where the site distance is, but, if it's just for emergency vehicles, I mean, it's, I, I can't even imagine it, I don't think it's ever been used by an emergency vehicle now, you know?
The question I've got, Norm, because that would be a change to Bear Hill Two, do we have to go through a whole, I mean, that's a major change, taking, uh, taking, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Taking the exception to a order of condition on a, uh, on a subdivision?
Well, I was gonna file an amendment, Tim, I was gonna file
That's what I'm saying, Clea, if, if we do that, I mean, I think we, to be fair to the public, we should at least do a public hearing.
Well, I'm, I'm with you, except that, here's the thing, if you read the, if you read the condition, I already met it, it's just, I know what your intent was, so I'm, I'm back here talking to you. Read the condition the way it was written, and Bear Hill's gonna connect, or Grizzly Drive's gonna drive, go all the way through. Grizzly Drive, I don't know how it was worded, but, it, it's already met, so, I, and I'm, and I'm, I'm fine with a public hearing, I, I've got no issues with that if you wanna do it, um, but, it's not written in a way that, that it needs to be even, I mean, I, I don't even know if I, you know, how, how I would address it, it's not written. But, like I said, I know what you guys' intent was, um, so I don't wanna cause any issues, and I, and I
I think an amendment would be
I, you know, first of all, I, I, I do have to kind of agree that, uh, that condition number four could have been written better.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's no, there's no doubt in my mind, uh, about that, uh, but, you know, I, I just don't want that temporary egress to become permanent.
Not me either.
That's, that's why, you see, that's why I suggest millings, because then you can rip that right back up if need be, yeah, if you pave it.
The, the problem with that is, and, and I'm doing worst case scenario, because I think I know what Norm's thinking, is that i- if the DCR holds fast and doesn't, doesn't give, uh, Clea his permission to move forward, Clea, you can tell me about, if I'm wrong, but Bryce Lemon's dead in the water then, correct?
Not Bryce Lemon.
I'm sorry, uh, Brittenell Estates is dead in the water.
Well, first of all, um, the DCR can't find me. They don't have, they don't have the ability to, to put a fine on it. DEP's already approved it. So, the DCR's gonna have an awful hard time stopping me, especially where it, Norm was extremely, uh, good about saying or, that, to them at that MIPA hearing, we do not want this to be the exit, we want this to go through here because of the site distance, it's important. So, they, they knew that going in. Plus, there's a thing called, uh, uh, you, you can, they can't stop you from using your land. And, and they gave it to me on, on, on Bryce, you know, Bill Pula, it was funny, Bill Pula called me and, and, you know, we, we negotiated a little bit, and I made it a little bit bigger, and they approved it, but, um, these guys didn't give me any warning, they didn't say that they didn't like it, they didn't say they didn't, anything at any indication, they just went bang and, and denied it, and I called them up, I said, what the hell did you deny? Why didn't you at least tell me what you wanted? Well, you know, we don't want you using that, uh, well, there's no, there's no way not to, I have to fill it. There's no, there's no other way, you know?
Clea, did they give you any findings for that, for why they denied it?
They did, and I, I can't recall them at the time, but they were futile, I mean, it was just, it was ridiculous what they said. I don't even know why, but, I appealed them, and I'll get it, I, 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 you know, I, I get to the finish line every time, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna not get to the finish line. I'm, I've been hammering them to, to, to sit down with me. I mean, if, I mean, if push comes to shove, I can span it, but, it's a hundred and eighty feet, I'm not, you know what that span would cost? It would be like a million dollars, it would be crazy.
I'm more worried what's gonna cost the town in ten years, and we gotta fix it.
Well, that's the problem with it too, and that's why I told them, the planning board does not want bridges, not at all.
Is it, this is Quabin, this is Dan out there in Quabin?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I can't even get the guy on the phone, I, I just talked to Alan. Alan was just, by the way, at Bryce Estates, do you guys get that email?
No.
No.
He, he went up and looked at all the erosion controls, and, and they, you know, they, they took a pretty good time, and they walked around there last Friday. He was pretty satisfied, he didn't want any new controls. I had, uh, Tom, I thought he copied Dave, um, on the, uh, on the email, if he didn't, Dave, I'm sorry.
Um, let me ask, who's Dan, who's Dan's boss, is it, um?
I think it's, uh, John Scannell.
Yeah, John, I think I know where Dick's going, I was gonna ask through Norm, is there, because we want this road to go out, is there anything the planning board can send for documentation to DCR to say, listen, we want this to go through?
Yeah.
I mean, right now, we've been in a hole for, and I'm throwing a number out there, five, six, seven years?
Yeah.
Let's get
Knowing DCR, knowing DCR, I mean, could write a letter, but, I personally, I don't think they're gonna respond to it. DCR has their own little world going on, if I may, um.
Well, I'm just thinking in support of, of, it gives Clea documentation, at least when he goes through the field, that he's
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with writing a letter of support.
It would help, can't hurt.
A letter of support, and I would not only send it to Dan, but I would send it to John Scannell.
I, I'm just trying to get this thing done.
There's nothing I'd like better, I mean, I'm ready to go, literally, financing's in place, everything's ready to go. I had, I have everything designed, everything approved by the DEP, the Rutland Concom, we did numerous sidewalks, numerous sidewalks. And, and it's just, it, for them to deny it without even giving me any indication that they want anything different, is just, I just think it's just useless, I mean, what, it's, it's ridiculous, why wouldn't they? I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think they're even gonna beat me in their own kangaroo court, you know, that dollar thing that they have. I mean, I, I don't see them, I just don't see them winning that, that battle. But in the meantime, I gotta fight with these guys just to get in front of them. You know, until, until the state of emergency is over for COVID, once it's over, they have forty-five days after that. Under normal circumstances, once they deny me, they have sixty days to, you know, to get back to me and, and hold a hearing and take care of them, but right now, that's why I say, I can probably have this thing done in the next six to eight months, but, I, I'm just, and I, I wanted to get started on Bear Hill, and the only thing I would say to you is, 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 if I can talk to Joe and to Nick and to Seth, and they, and they think that I would be okay with that other entrance in the meantime, until I get that done, then I would appreciate the board, you know, if you guys could go along with that, if, and, and like I say, I'm, I'm here, and I'm, I'm listening. If, if there's anything you want, I'm, I'm willing to, to, to look into it.
Well, at least those houses up on Bear Hill Two are at the top of the hill, all the way down at the far end. Uh, by the way, i- if we should decide to try to contact, uh, DCR, we have to be very, very careful. That we are not advocating for Blair builders. We're advocating for
For the town.
The integrity of our subdivision regulations
Yes.
And the safety concerns that we have.
Yeah, and put it that way.
Well said, it's gonna be very, very clearly out that way.
No, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
The point I was trying to make, Norm, is, we want that road to go through, so we've got a second egress for a subdivision that has a dead end right now, and an ancillary road that's being used as an exit, so, for the towns, roads, safety, fire, and police So for the towns, roads, safety, fire and police, that's the reason why we want this thing approved and, and, and executed.
Correct, yeah.
So I, I'm in a hundred and ten percent agreement with that.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I, I guess if, yeah, yeah, if fire, police and DPW will go along with it?
I'd just get Cle, Norm, to send in a request for amendment and then run it through the procedures of having a, uh, what do you call it, a public hearing? And then move forward, because if we've got the documentation at that time from the three departments saying it's okay, we can have that at the hearing, got a request from the applicant, and we've sent a letter to DCR indicating that the, the town's road integrity and the subdivision is important, I don't know what more else we can do.
If we make an amendment, I'd rather it be something that, I guess I'll say postpones this condition rather than eliminates it.
Hmm, that's a good way of putting it.
And that's all I'm really asking for too. And I, you know, I, when, when, you want to have a public hearing, right? When we had the public hearings before, we had like Mary, forgot her last name.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and she, remember she used to make us brownies, those were good too.
Yeah, chocolate chip cookies and a brownie.
But, uh, you know, we had her and maybe two or three other rebutters, now you're going to have a whole subdivision up our ass. And, you know, I, I, the condition is written in such a way that it's already been fulfilled. I know your intent and I'm here talking to you about it. I don't think it's the greatest idea to hold a public hearing and, and grabbing a butters list, because that whole subdivision is going to, is going to come out, and you know, I mean, you know, once, one, that's why I try to get all my permitting done prior to, to the, the people living there, because once they live there, it's almost like they don't want anybody else to live there, you know what I mean? I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I, I just, again, to Norm, I just think it, I, I hear what you're saying, Cle, but I just, I think it's the correct way to proceed with this.
Okay.
Just to make sure it's transparent to everybody. And again, if they come out and complain, what we'll be looking at is, A, public safety, we'll have three chiefs hopefully saying yes. Um, we've got a plan for, um, a temporary fix until the DCR, uh, gets the, you know, you can get your appeal. I mean, I, I just want, again, it's, it's for me, I, I see the, what you're asking for and I'm, I'm willing to flex on it. I just want to have the I's dotted and T's crossed, so down the road, there isn't any issues.
Dave, what's your take?
I'm just wondering if the board needs to make a decision tonight, or if it can, or if it can gather information and then come back with a decision at the next meeting?
I think that's a great idea.
Or if we can talk about this offline, uh, with, with you and myself, after we gather any additional information you want tonight?
What other information, that, I'm, like you say, I'm drawing a blank.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess we should look at whether a hearing is actually required. I'd like to see a better, I'd like to see the plans and get up to speed to exactly what, what the plans look like. I'm not really up to speed on this enough to be able to advise this board at this point.
Okay.
It's.
Unless you have, unless you think it's more simple than that, then feel free to do what you think you need to do.
No, 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 I, I, I think this was just a discussion tonight, and, I mean, we don't even have, Cle's got to send in the request for amendment, that hasn't even happened yet.
Well, that may, that's a decision point, whether the request is necessary or not, I mean.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, that, I like Dave's idea, let's, you know, think about what you guys want for information. I have the Form C all filled out, I got it, Dave sent it to me the other day, so I have it all filled out. But when I read the condition, I said, meh, it's really already satisfied, I just, that I just, again, I knew the intent and I, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, pull a gangle.
Well, I want to say your first step is to. Your first step is to get those three letters.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Seth and, uh, Nick and, uh, Joe, uh, tomorrow.
I, I think with that, Norm, we've got a good leg to stand on. I, I just, I was around and, well, I guess all of us were around for the intent of what was, what Bear Hill Two was for.
Correct.
And, and I know Marilyn and Sean were on the board, but I was adamant about, we need that second road through, we've got to get that before we get started on Bear Hill Two.
Yeah.
And, and we gave a little bit of leeway by letting a couple houses get built, and I'm fine with that, again.
Christmas time.
Yeah.
I mean, I, oh, sorry.
Oh, wait, no.
I mean, let's just flat out a little bit, if you were to have a hearing, what is it that you're looking to do? Are you looking to change the language of this condition? Are, are you looking to modify a plan of land?
That's all.
modify this condition to say what versus what it says now?
Basically, like Norm said, postpone it until that, uh.
Yeah, a- and I, off the top of my head, I don't know how to word it. Uh, I have to give that some, some real thought.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing you want to think about there, Norm, is, once it's built, those conditions don't really mean much, because what are you going to stop? You know what I mean? I, I'm just putting that out there, I'm pointing it out, but I'm, I'm, um, you know, that's why I say, if there's a, there's a, there's a mechanism to say, look, if they, if the houses get built and you still haven't said it, I, I expect this to be taken care of. But, and that says not until I get an occupancy permit. So maybe, you know, it's, if, if we get the stuff from Joe and from Seth and Nick and everybody's okay with it, when it comes time for me to get an occupancy permit, then, you know, then I, I, we, we have that amendment hearing, if I don't have it done by then. But I, I know, by the time I build my first house, I mean, we're probably looking, if, if it takes three or four months to build a house, I start, let's say I started even in April, right? I mean, it's, I, I'm not, I'm not May, June, July, I mean, I'm not, till a year from now, I'm not even looking for an OP.
So, so it sounds to me like you don't need a decision tonight, you don't necessarily need a decision by the next meeting, because you seem to have some time involved here with, with planning out the DCR piece, is that right?
Yes, but I just, first of all, I don't want to do any work in there, because, you know, without you guys knowing it. Second of all, I want to have a, a plan that if for some reason I do need an OP, what do you want done to that exit? And whether you'd be okay with it, and yeah, well, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have a public hearing. If you want me to do it now, I'll do it now, if you want me to wait, I'll wait. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, you, you guys, whatever, whatever drum you want to beat, whatever beat you want to, I'll put on the drum, I'll follow it, you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm just here because I don't want to do anything behind anybody's back, I don't want anybody to think that I'm just ta, you know, walking in and doing what I want, I just want to, you know, do the right thing, I want to talk about it and come up with a plan and, 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 you know, if it's necessary, you know, we'll, 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 we'll follow on to Plan B. It might not be necessary, but better to talk about it upfront.
Yeah, no, because the intent, Norm.
I appreciate your candor, Cle, totally.
The, the intent was Bear Hill Two wasn't getting started until we had that egress, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, yeah.
That's right, that, that was the intent, absolutely.
Yeah, so, I, I guess what I'm getting at is I'd rather have everything amended, whatever, if that construction's going to start, you know, like, because the road's got to be built before the houses get in there. Or I should say, the road has to be started before the houses get in there, and if that starts and we get questioned, you know?
Well, that's, that's a big, that's a big problem, yeah.
Yeah, and see, there, there's my problem, Norm, right there, is if we start getting questioned, listen, it wasn't supposed to be started until the second egress is done. That's why having the, the hearing and the, like you said, the amendment of postponing it, I'm okay with, because then we got documentation to back the board.
Hmm, yeah.
Without it, we're basically violating what we have for orders of conditions.
And may I make a suggestion? We don't allow all twelve houses in, we allow ten. Because.
What's true?
That Cle can't ask for the town to accept the roads. I'm sorry, but, just, just trying to protect my, our butt.
I get it.
I mean, I mean, my first thing would be at least, um, two things. One, get the chiefs to, from a standpoint of a safety standpoint, give us backing there. Second one is put together that letter to the DCR indicating that the town really is looking for this road to be completed.
Correct.
For safety, um, safety's just the bottom line.
Yeah.
It's safety and for egress. And, and then we just have to take it from there. I don't know what else to do, I mean, those are the first two steps I think we should at least go down. And then the day, but we can meet again. Yeah, we can take this up at another meeting, once we've got that documentation in place.
And I'd like to see a letter from us too, DCR.
Oh, I, I mean, really written very well.
Marilyn, you've been very quiet on this.
Were you PT talking to me or Marilyn?
Marilyn.
I'm sorry, um, I'm, I think that, you know, I do like the, the last approach that you just put out with getting the letters and, um, I think, you know, it gives us a, a chance to think about it too a little bit more, because it's kind of in a complex situation. So, yeah, that's, that's what I would like to see done, is to, to get the letters from the chiefs and a letter from us and, uh, and then have another meeting and give us all some time to think about it. That's it.
Okay, I, I'm definitely leaning with you, Tim, on the public hearing. You know, uh, you, you know, we have, don't want to toot anybody's horn, uh, Cle trying to be a little bit upfront with us.
Yeah.
I think we've got to be upfront with the residents of there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Who does the plowing right now, town?
Yeah.
Those roads are all accepted by town.
Except for the, the little section there.
Yeah, Arrowhead.
Not Arrowhead, well, part of Arrowhead, because it, it goes to like two houses in its house.
But I don't think, I don't think any part of Arrowhead.
But the access out onto Brittenel, is that what they're plowing also?
No, I plow that.
Yeah, you plow that.
But Arrowhead has two houses and that road's accepted in front of them, Norm.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, then it was, okay.
All right.
Okay, I think that's where we're going to leave it at this point.
Okay, I'll, I'll file a Form C tomorrow and I'll get in touch with the, uh, the, uh, you know, the fire chief and the, and the police chief and, uh, the, the DPW director.
Actually, if I could just request you're holding off on the Form C until you've got these other things done and the board has another meeting to determine whatever it wants to do and to codify this, so that we don't start any time clocks ticking. Because once you submit that Form C, then we have a, a, we have, we have to do something.
Sure, I won't, I won't, I'll wait.
Is that okay, Norm? If we just, you know, get a couple of weeks here to, so that we can act within the amount of time that this board may need to have the hearings resolved.
One more meeting.
Well, the other thing too is, it's my opinion that those sites are exempt from the building permit bylaw because of the sewer moratorium. We provided all that documentation and backup when Mike Nicholson was here, but that goes away in 2024. And believe me, that comes pretty fast, um, then hopefully it doesn't get renewed. But, um, right now I'm exempt, and if, the longer I have to wait, the more I get killed.
Cle was, was, because I thought the, and again, I'm not the expert, but I thought Bryce Lemon was the only exception to the building permit, they had other ones?
No, Maple, Maple Hill was exempt.
Okay.
They, they, the lawyers confirmed that, but, uh, we, I had a meeting with, um, Amy Questle.
Yeah.
And George, myself, Mike Nicholson, and I think, Dave, were you there?
I was not.
And then, and what we did was they asked us to provide them, you know, the documentation. I gave them all the documentation of the moratorium that the select board put on back in 2007. And, you know, and, and a moratorium stops the, um, time clock up until the time it gets taken off. So those were already approved before, so, um, you know, they, they, they get till 2024. Noble Hill gets till 2025 based on the, the, it was subject to the new, the new moratorium, because I already had sewer extension permits for those, um, from the town. So anyways, long story short, I, I get till 2024 from the time the, you know, eight years from the time the moratorium was lifted, and I believe that was 2015, 2016? 2016, February 2016. And, and so I just, you know, I, I, and again, that's another reason, and that's another reason why I'm, I'm in full speed ahead to build, you know, uh, uh, Brittenel Estates. I don't want to leave it sit there, I mean, I'm paying real estate taxes on lots that I can't even build, killing me.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. And thanks for the explanation, Cle, just, I didn't know, because all I'd ever heard was Bryce Lemon, I didn't know the other ones were tied in, it's good to know.
I, I believe they are, they haven't gotten back to me on them, but, you know, it, it's fairly evident in the way it's written. And, you know, we provided all the documentation and as well, Mike Nicholson was here, you know, he was pushing them, but since COVID, you know, the, they haven't done much on that, and we haven't pushed them, you know?
I know that's not our prerogative, just for me for knowledge and that was it.
Yeah, that's fine, no, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so done with that one at this point.
Hey, did you guys see the, the top coat down at Bryce?
Yes.
Place is looking good, isn't it?
Yeah, all except the connection to the rail trail.
Hey, they worked on that today, Norm.
Oh, wow.
I got my little mini excavator in there, we're working on it, we'll have that done very shortly, next couple of days.
Awesome, I'll, I'll be down there to check it out.
You'll love it.
Cle, you might, you might, based on last night's select board meeting, you might have a little extra time for the, uh, Fall Town meeting. I might get pushed off until later in November.
Really, did you, did you see what I submitted there last night?
Don't get me wound up, you already had me wound up last night, that's why I had to get in and say something on the meeting last night, because I was, not, not on yours, but on the other, other thing, but yeah. A- as an engineer, I was not happy with what happened.
I mean, all the statements he made were false, it was terrible, that was wrong. I mean, you know, you pick up the phone and ask somebody before you just go submitting letters like that, anyways, I, I.
As an engineer, I don't care what the age was, because my, uh, my grandfather-in-law, who was ninety-five, still had his faculties, that could do, do that work if he had to, so.
And most of you guys named Jim Callic, yeah, and Jim's sharp as a tack, you're not going to put anything by him. That was an odd thing to say about him being infirmed.
Yeah.
Anyways, I don't mean to.
No, no, I, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up, because as an engineer, I was frustrated as heck last night with the, with what was sent out.
Anyways, thank you for your time tonight, guys, you're all set with me?
You're welcome. Thank you, Cle.
Thank you, guys, see ya.
All right, take care.
Okay. Okay.
What are we on to next?
Next, we, uh.
It's a good thing for Carolina that we're done with that, because after reading through the general conditions and the special, you see the red ink? Um, I, I.
I'm wondering, who did we have on?
It was the three of us, Neil and.
Who did we have a part-time planner?
Yeah, we had the, the big guy who's now.
Not Ron.
No, no, before him, the, um.
We went to East Hampton?
Yeah. No, 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 this was the big guy, uh, blonde hair.
Oh, oh, hey, oh, yeah, okay, yes, I, I can't remember his name, but.
He, he, yeah, he was our planner at the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he was our, our hired planner, part-time. I can't think of his name right now.
Yeah.
Greg, Greg, um.
Well, anyways.
Okay, next, marking property bounds.
Yes.
And I at least looked this over, I don't know if any of you have it all.
Oh, yeah.
Most of it is, far as I'm concerned, it's garbage for us.
Not the streetlights, I like that one from Holden's.
Personally, um, we're talking, uh, monuments or whatever, Spencer's so-so, but, uh, I tell you, the one, I'm going to have to rewrite it here. I like Paxton.
Okay, the, the only one to me that had anything decent was Spencer.
Well, I had one thing marked on Spencer that I liked.
First of all.
And I said maybe.
That's what it said.
I said Paxton, uh.
Yeah, Paxton, it's right at the down page sixty-four.
Okay. Uh. First, first, first of all, um. I don't think anybody's doing granite.
No. No, and, and I think this, this is the one that said, uh, concrete or granite?
Paxton did not. Paxton says, uh, granite.
Alright, there was one that said, uh, uh, the both.
And. Let me see.
Shrewsbury had the reinforced concrete bounds.
Spencer says reinforced concrete or granite. Okay.
Okay, that's the one then.
The, the one big thing is, again, as far as I am concerned, that is not contained in any of these others in Spencer. Under A, monuments shall be installed at all streets, intersections, at all points of change in directions or curvature of streets, at all lot corners. No one else has that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, all of the others did nothing but. Pretty much as we were.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, they do make a distinction. Uh. Uh, where the heck it is. Okay, on the C. After they, you know, delineate the particular ones that says monuments, at other locations, in other words, the real lot corners, it says shall be iron pipe or drill hole. Other than the fact I don't like pipe.
I don't like pipe, rod.
It will rot.
Yeah.
Solid steel rod, one inch diameter, that's gonna be there for a long, long time.
It'll be there for some time.
You know, so just even tweaking that a little bit. Uh, we can make it real nasty and say stainless steel rod.
Well, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, the other thing, Norm, I liked about Spencer's on A was it, it, it's got the, in opinion of the board, in opinion of the board, permanent monuments are necessary, so. It gives the board some latitude there. That's what I liked about A on Spencer.
Um. And. What's in our subdivisions now?
Nothing, is it?
For bounds?
Yeah. There's, there is, I know there's gotta be.
So if I can find it, I don't know, quick here.
Because it appears. That the bounds that they're placing, I may be wrong, but the bounds that they're placing in subdivisions now, I just kind of ran them.
Yeah.
You know, all they're used for is benchmarks.
Yeah, basically to make sure that everything's correct when they're doing the layout.
I'm just wondering, what, what specifications do we have that's telling them what and how many and?
I get it, I gather it's up to the builder actually, is what.
That's what it's only sounding like, and that doesn't sound too close to me.
Monuments, page thirty-nine, subdivision.
Um, yeah, right, monuments shall be installed at all way intersections, at all points of changing direction, curvature waves, and at those points where the thing is playing, what permanent monuments are necessary. Monument shall be granite or, uh, concrete or granite four inches square by four inches feet long. Uh, no permanent monument shall be installed until all construction that could destroy is completed. Uh, plenty which have required a cer- a certificate filed on registered lancer ready to be obtained at the applicant's expense. Indicating that these monuments are in place and accurately located.
Whoa.
That's never.
We have not done that.
Yes, we have.
Way back, but.
Uh. Well, it's been way back since we accepted the subdivision too. Uh, I believe, I, I, I can still.
Last year, wasn't it? Bear Hill. I know the ones out in front, but.
Bear Hill, I distinctly remember a report from Quinn.
Yeah, with the spike.
Certify, certifying or saying that this pound was missing, and then finally certifying that the pounds weren't there.
But was, that was not lots though, it was highway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. And, and again, our language says nothing about lots.
Yeah, that's why, if we took our language and, and use this Spencer as a modification to it, I like it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll go along with that.
And, like I say, I, I didn't see anything else that really struck me.
Shrewsbury's was just wordy as heck.
The mass DOT stuff, I mean, is. That's highway.
I mean, the only thing with Shrewsbury is, they, they, in like the first paragraph, they indicate how it should be installed. On the property, a- and, and I'm okay with that. Um. But again, I, I really like Spencer's.
Monument?
Yeah, under Spencer's, uh, section E, A, B, C, D.
What about the dry stone masonry?
Where was, did I miss that?
It was on the mass DOT.
Yeah, Shrewsbury was, uh, what I liked was the reinforced concrete, but it said open space parcels also. On Shrewsbury, because it would be nice if that is delineated.
Delineated.
So that nobody can, well, no, that, that's part of something else at a later date.
Only thing I. If you monument the roads.
Yeah.
And all the lots.
What's left? You'll have wetlands and.
Open space.
An open space.
So those first two.
Take care of.
Takes, is take care of documenting the open space. You simply draw a line connecting all of the house lots. Whatever's not connected.
So the space. Yeah, I'm okay with that. The wetlands change. Yeah, I, I got that behind me. They change all. Bucky and the boys have been, uh, increasing the water levels in my area pretty good.
Well, I, I.
And my wrought iron in the back of my property is now unseeable, cause it's underwater.
I'm just thinking that, uh, what used to be a swamp out there beyond Rufus Putnam House, now you're gonna have two houses out there, and how did that happen? How many years has it been since, you know, things are changing, in other words?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Swamps are filling in and growing up and.
Yeah.
So eventually, you know, they'll turn into.
The only thing about, again, Shrewsbury was, it was going into all the details of how to do it.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's a little bit, to, to coin, uh, Addison's, it's, it's too much detail. I mean, it's wordy. Spencer was pretty much, this is what you gotta do. Um, this is our expectation, done.
Alright.
And I'm okay with mass DOT, but I, I don't think that applies to us.
Yeah. We're talking about people's properties here they want to identify.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Sean, that's why.
You want something else if they can, you know, get a, a lawnmower around, if you put a big, uh, ogilisck on their boundary, you know? To stay where they are. You want something practical as well.
Well, there's something above Bear Hill, I think Clea was saying. They put one of the bounds up there, and one of the homeowners dug the damn thing up and pulled it out.
Well. I hope he doesn't have an argument somewhere down the road with his neighbor, cause. I've already been through that with mine, of, I, I basically hired a Lancer Ver to come out and re-pipe everything, cause the iron mysteriously disappeared, so, uh, I got that fixed. So we all know, but, uh, you know, things like that, that's why I like Spencer's, it says you, and I'm okay with the iron pipe, because. I mean, yeah, it'll go away in time, but. Jesus, it's twenty-one years and mine's still in place in the front of the property.
But a steel rod will last way longer.
Yeah, that's true.
It's still not that expensive.
No.
Well, you know, we're not talking.
I'm fine if changing it from iron pipe to, uh, steel. But I think we should.
What would a size iron pipe or, you know?
I don't want, see, I stick, I don't want to get into that detail. It's like, well, I, I.
No, then, then, again, if you can't put a piece of three-eighths rebar in the ground.
Well, that's what.
Like a one-inch. On a solid steel, it's gonna be there for a while.
It's a healthy chunk of steel.
Yeah.
I know, I know. I have no problem with one-inch. It's, it's lesser and, and. Hearing, sometimes they use spikes. Uh, and, uh, yeah. That does not, I don't like that.
Well, do we modify ours using Spencer's and then just change iron pipe?
Oh, yeah.
To one-inch steel rod and? Cause I don't like the approved use of drill hole, I'm okay with that, and iron pipe for sp- excuse me, for specific locations. And then shall use iron pipe or, or drill hole on C. I would prefer the or disappear and just say, shall be one-inch, uh, steel pipe. On C.
Steel rod.
Or steel rod, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm fine with that, but.
Drill, drill hole is. To take care of ledge.
Yeah, but it says or, that's the thing I didn't like there, cause if you or it, you basically. Oh, I see what you're saying.
You wanna drill up? You wanna drill the iron pipe in the ledge?
Oh, yeah, then concrete, it'll never go anywhere. That baby will be there before, longer than the house will be.
He has to, he will.
That's fine. I'm okay with the drill hole for ledge. That, that's a good point. So should we try to get this modified and honor warrant? Or do we need to do that?
Don't need to.
All we gotta do is have a hearing?
Yes, a public hearing.
You willing to put something together from the ideas you've heard here?
Sure, maybe we could touch base, as we normally do, just to capture our thinking. I'll get out the log out for the towns, where Spencer's the leading one.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Sketch something up, yeah.
Yeah.
Personally, I like the rifle barrels at each corner.
She like a rifle barrel at each corner.
That, that's, that was common.
Yeah, it's in a lot of deeds.
Oh, yeah. Yep, but I like my rifle.
I like the bear. I got a bunch of, now I don't want to get rid of those. Those are Remingtons, I can't do those.
I, I remember researching the courthouse when we were trying to figure out bounds, property we had down on Cape Cod.
And it said rifle barrels?
And, uh, I, I do remember, I've heard of rifle barrel before, but, but. Uh. Mo- most commonly, it was a stake and stones.
Oh, okay, for the location.
On the deeds, you know? Or to a large oak tree.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, that existed two hundred years ago.
Yeah.
Now. It is long gone.
Hurricane, whatever else tore it down. Alright, I'm good with that.
Alright. Okay. Uh.
Oh, I've done my town survey too.
Number ten, land use report, follow, uh, to the list of chapter sixty-one lands.
So.
The assessor got it to you, that girl.
So there was a request from Tim, working with the assessing office. To get a list of the lands that are in chapter sixty-one, so that request was fulfilled, it's right here. Uh, the caveat is that there's no map that keys up to the list.
I know.
And that the list does not capture APR. Or CRs.
I asked her to do that.
Conservation restrictions or, um.
Agricultural preservation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I asked her to put that as a separate column in there.
It doesn't ex- they don't have that information, so the best that they provide, I'll pass this around, I'm gonna start with you. So we have a list at least, so if there's an occasion where there's a sixty-one A request coming in, we have a list. Although that really should be circulated to assessors as well, to also provide feedback to the boards, but we do have something that was fulfilled and there it is.
I guess something's better than nothing.
Yeah, it's a start.
Yeah. How do we, David, if, if we wanted to put another column in, I, I wouldn't even know, how do, if the assessor doesn't have the A, APR or CR. Who the heck would have that? Would that, you'd have to go to the registry of deeds to pull all that?
Well, I would think because. APR. You, you, you could probably get it from Boston.
Yeah, the Commonwealth has that list.
Yeah. And I would have that. For the, for the town, which, you know, parcels, because they come around every ten years.
Would they have the APR and CR or just?
It's just APR, uh, CR, conservation restriction, that's gonna be strictly with Concom.
So to, to get this list completed, I wouldn't have a problem, I don't know who.
But they don't have a conservation restrictions on that.
No, there's nothing, it's just.
It's just sixty-one's.
Well, well, that's what I was thinking. If we've got that, and that's a great, great Excel form or something like that, we can put it into. We could add another column in there if we get that information. Which, uh, it'd be a great job for an intern to go through and do that, instead of having David's time that you're expens-.
I don't know that that would be appropriate for the planner to do so.
Well, no, no, that's why I don't want you doing it.
Just be linked to that, because I, that's really. It's information.
Yeah, and no, and that was my intent. I didn't want you spending your dollars on putting an Excel spreadsheet together. I would rather get the information and find an intern or somebody else to do it, that, cause it, it's just Excel spreadsheet, going through, checking that against Boston's. Putting another column in, CR, APR, so if we got it, we got it.
And to me, that's another thing we should be asking conservation, uh, the conservation committee, do you have a list of conservation restrictions?
You were, you took the words out of my mouth for the next question.
And not only the restrictions, but the number. You know, the, that goes with it.
You want me to send a email to Peter and ask him for that, and then.
Yeah.
Instead of sending it to the board, I've been sending it to David to keep out of the, uh, uh, open meeting law violation.
Yeah.
So I can, I, should, um, to, to be helpful to them, should we send them that list and say, could you, uh, go through that list and tell us which are CRs? To help them out, so they don't have to start from scratch? Cause.
If, if they're so listed, but they may not even be listed there, we don't know.
Well, if that's all the sixty-one, a- all we would ask them to do is, could you take that list with sixty-one, sixty-one A and B? And, um, tell us which one of these, um, properties have conservation restrictions on them? And then secondly, send a request, which I don't know who, that's where I'm gonna need some help, into Boston to give a list. And if we want to, we could send that along, saying we're trying to find out from this list which are APR. So we're sort of helping both departments out be successful. I, I mean, that's my thought. Anybody can jump in and tell me, I'm, I'm ears, but.
I'm just wondering, how does this tie in? I mean, what's the overall purpose of this information?
Because right now, when somebody comes in with, uh, the viners, wasn't it the viner? They wanna put a house in, I, I'm the one that requested where, where's the sixty-one acreage? Is the open space, is six acres? That means they can have six acres of forest with that. But where in that whole map is that six acre that goes with it, that we have to?
And my thought process, Dave, it, it would give us, when somebody comes in and they're, or I shouldn't say somebody, when the select board sends us a request. For sixty-one A, do we want to take it? If it's got a CR or an APR on it, which we would have a list, we can immediately say we have no interest in it, because it, it doesn't serve the town's planning purpose at all. If, if, if we would have a list of saying, okay, um, Pleasantale, uh, they wanna convert that from sixty-one A to, uh. Take it out of sixty-one A, and it doesn't have a CR or APR on it, then we could recommend to the town, like, this property would be advantageous for the town. To use for future planning. That's the reason why, I guess I wanted to list, so it'd give us a tool to be able to tell the select board, yeah, you need to look at, and I know we don't have money, I get that, but at least. It would give us a tool to be able to give the select board a, a response and a direction.
I'm wondering if other departments should be providing more information for their end, maybe that gets its way, finds its way to here. Like the assessing department saying more about it before it gets here, or conservation. Like the assessing department saying more about it before it gets here, or conservation, having an opinion about it in terms of what's on it.
The conservation and assessor, if I remember the law right, have to, we have to give a, a letter back to the, um, but the, the way the law's written, everything's done in parallel, so it's not, you, you've got a great point, if they would give us information, then we could make a decision on what to do, but if I remember the law right, everything's done in parallel, you've got sixty days to get your response.
I suppose if we, if push comes to shove and we have to research every property, we can do that, because an APR is on the deed. Conservation restrictions are recorded, if they are valid.
Mm-hmm, it's, it's just the timing, what I see has been our biggest fault here, we can't, we as a town can't respond fast enough when these come in. And that's the only reason why I figured we had a tool, at least the planning board could have a response put together quick, I shouldn't say quicker, but we could give the select board some guidance.
And, and the ag commission, you know, should be able to say, when a sixty-one comes around, is it valuable farmland?
Yes.
Is it something that we should try to push?
I mean, the ag commission can answer the APR question, maybe as readily as any other entity.
I mean, th- this sounds to me like, I like what you're saying, this maybe is a procedure that we need to get ingrained, embedded with the select board. There, there might need to be a meeting of the boards when a, when a sixty-one A comes in, and let's sit down and talk about this, instead of sending it out for comment.
Yeah.
And no board, known to the other boards, the ag, the Concom, or the assessor, having any input from anybody else. I mean, again, that would be after procedure, that the, the select board would have to, I guess, ratify or something like that, in how they handle sixty-one A. I mean, I, I, I just wanna do this so we don't get into the jarby thing or anything else where we're backed into a corner and we gotta make a call, because we're on, we're on a time basis.
Because in Holden, one of the things that we're trying to do is grab Holden's, um, sixty-one type of an application, uh, they rate it for the town, whether or not to buy it or not.
Okay.
And, uh, if it gives a good rating, then the town goes ahead, okay, let's see what we can do about buying the property.
We could take, I mean, there's an excellent idea, Dick, with that list, and with the CRs and the APR on there, we could take that list and highlight when, when any of those properties come up, that town's gotta look into it, and that would be even a better tool than to, than to wait until we get it, already have something ready to go.
Yeah.
Well, part of the issue, too, is there doesn't seem to be a lot of money set aside to take one.
I'm not.
Should they be desirable, they can take?
Yeah, I'm not done with that fight yet, I gotta figure out a way, because Skip had a great solution of putting it before the town to discuss. Unfortunately, the select board didn't see that solution as a possibility, voted on it. Um, I guess I need to be a little bit vocal, because I'm, again, I, I know I've had this talk with Dave, we gotta think, we as a town, I'm not saying the planning board, we as a town have gotta think ten, fifteen years, twenty years down the road, because in ten or fifteen years, a, a, an acre of land's gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollars, and it's gonna be way out of the town's ability to buy it.
It's gonna happen. You're gonna look back and you're gonna say, well.
We should have done that.
Well.
And it's too late.
There's a curve of development that's gonna happen, most likely.
Our man offered the town twice, Roland Ridge will be here for fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, we can't let those digs slip by anymore, and that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, and i- i- if we gotta take a hit, we gotta figure out what to do, I don't, I don't have those answers right now, but I'm to the point now that, I'm getting old enough that it's, it's getting too late, I mean.
Yeah.
And, and we might be already past that point, I don't know, but having a tool like this, I like your rating thing, that's excellent idea of doing, I mean, we've gotta start, let's keep going with it.
Yeah.
And i- if we have to, if we have to, uh, send that list to the, um, the Concom and say, hey, can you take that list and tell us what the, uh, CR properties are? Get the APR from the state, and at least we've got a tool. And, but I, I like David's, we all need to get together. And, and, and I don't know how to talk, maybe I need to talk to Mitch about that, and say, listen, next time around, maybe we need to get a procedure in place, because there's none right now, Norm, I don't think in the town at all to discuss that. It comes in, sends to the boards, and get a, get a recommendation back, and then talk about it.
Whatever, with state law.
Yeah. But we can take the state law, and we're still, that's the word I'm looking for, to the spirit of it, it's just the town has a procedure for executing sixty-one.
You can modify the procedure internally to, uh, for different things than, more than what the state law requires.
Yeah, and that's what, and that's what I was looking to do, so, I mean, I, I don't, if you guys want me to work with Dave, I'll continue, I mean, I don't have a problem sending a letter to Pete, I'm sorry, to, uh, God, I don't know where that came from, to the Concom.
Yeah.
And, uh, to have to Peter.
Yeah.
And, uh, say, hey, we've got a list together, can you help us with this?
And, or maybe he has a list already of all, um, CI's that are out there, because by rights, they, uh.
They're supposed to keep track of that.
They're supposed to not only keep track of it, but make inspections.
Yeah.
You, you might be right about that, because the conservation commission re, uh, it had done some edits and updated the, that's what I'm, I'm looking for some words, they updated their open space plan recently. I believe that was one of the things in the plan, was a list of CR, possibly sixty-one APR. So that document, I have a copy of it here.
So we could cross-reference it with that, and I'm not looking for you to do that.
If you have an electronic format, then you just merge your data.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, did she send you that in an Excel spreadsheet or just a PDF?
I just have the copy that was distributed to the planning board as part of the process to approve it, or authorize it, or accept it, or be aware of it, whatever it was.
Be aware of it, probably, yeah.
I meant this one that she sent you, is that just a PDF she sent you, or she sent you?
She just sent me the paper list.
Okay, I guess I would ask, if you get a, a chance, just send her an email, does she have that in Excel format? Or can she, I mean, hell, it's a PDF, I'll use my frickin' software and convert it to Excel if I have to, because I did it for Anita for all the, uh, bylaws, they didn't have any way to do it, and I converted all the PDFs to Word, so she could work on, this was years ago, and gave her a copy of it, so at least it gave her a head start. Could do the same thing with that, if, if it's not in an Excel format. But it's just, I, I, I think it's just a tool that the board could use, hell, that the select board could use.
Oh yeah.
And we've never had anything like this, we just like, here it is, do you want it or don't want it? And, and, it's just not enough time to pull that off in my mind. I mean, I was, I, I had two weeks as a citizen to try to, try to come up with financing, what we were gonna do with jarbies, what it's needed, and, and there's just no way you're gonna pull that off, I mean.
Which I'll, I'll tell you right now, finally Joe Buckley, he said he'll, uh, sit down with Randy.
Good, because I talked to Randy, I said, I wanna sit in on that, you know, with, with the.
Digestor for.
Oh yeah.
Just to get, just to give him some ideas, we don't have to do it right now.
Well, not only him, but I, I want, you know, a selectman there, and also, I want a little bit of knowledge out there. And you're right, I mean, I tried to get online the other night, the meeting there with the CPIC, I think that's how it goes, and, and, um, I couldn't get online.
Oh yeah.
And I, I was texted because, damn it, you know, if you get it on there, why, I wanna just say, hey, listen, this is what we're trying to do, and, you know, just to give them heads up.
All right, well, that sounds good, I'm great, she put that together, so you just need to take it a next step, I'll send a letter to Peter and ask him if he's got it.
Yeah.
Um, or, Dave, do you want me to s- to send you, because you've got that, she sent you, so she didn't send it electronic, is she just gave it to you in paper form?
Uh, I believe so.
All right, I'll ask, I'll ask again the assessor, Candace, I think her name is.
Yeah, I did.
If she's got an electronic form of that, that we could have. And then, I could, I, David or I, whoever, can send to Peter and say, hey, here's what we've got, can you take this and, and add what's these sixty-ones, which ones are CRd?
Yeah, if the, any of them are C, got CI's on them or whatever.
Yeah.
Or do you have a list of the CI's?
We can do the merging, yeah, that's fine.
Plus, I, I mean, I have the open space update.
Oh, you do, is that in an Excel format, or just paper again?
The copy that we posted, a couple of years ago.
All right, well, I guess I'll just send an email to Peter, ask him.
If you want, that's fine.
Yeah, just to get this, just to keep it rolling.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Okay. Last item, town center study update.
Right, so, um, as part of the, as part of some of the longer range planning initiatives, as the board recalls, the town, uh, planning, planning office and the, working with the CMRPC received some grant monies earlier in the year. Uh, part of those were in follow-up to prior planning studies, especially the growth management ones, which had some recommendations, one of which was to do a study of the town center, which generally speaking is the one twenty-two to fifty-six area, and also shown on the map here. So, in follow-up to that, we convened a town center study group, and have been meeting periodically, and one of the, one of the things that we decided to do was to come up with a survey. Uh, the survey has been distributed on the town's website, on the town's Facebook page, there was a mailing that went out to the businesses in the area, and we're asking anybody interested to forward this to their social networks, to see if it can be distributed further. Uh, the survey's open until October, uh, we're looking to gather some information and work that into the overall study, which is, uh, being conducted in terms of the research effort by the CMRPC, with the ultimate goal of coming up with recommendations. Uh, the COVID has put us off a little bit schedule-wise, and also in terms of some of the meetings that we would have liked to have done. Obviously, we're looking to have a public forum, where we have people in, and have like a charrette and a live conversation, we will try to get to that as soon as it's safe to do so. But anyways, here's the survey, uh, this is part of the planning process that the planning board has been aware of and is in supportive for the town center.
Yeah, I've already done my survey.
Thank you.
And we had a very nice walk today.
Yeah, they put it on Facebook.
It is on the town's Facebook page.
Oh, they did another survey, yeah, they, they did the survey already for the town center, that's what. So, I saw the one that's in the packet, we don't need to submit that one, or is that just for a reference?
The one that's in the packet is for reference, the actual live survey would be accessible through Facebook or the town's website.
Yeah, yeah, I personally filled it out already.
Great.
I'd like to know how many people are gonna put down the expanding WRTA bus service. I, I didn't go for that one. Um, well, Rutland used to have a bus service, not WRTA, but.
Well, that was a little, that was a short bus that came through town, if I remember right.
It, it was a regular bus that used to go to Worcester all the time, and you'd be surprised how many people used to be in there, you know, shopping. But, uh, the reason why I say that, because how much money it cost the town to have that service. And not only that, if it comes into Holden, we also get charged.
Oh.
Because it's, uh, went down out.
With all of these fifty-five plus, that might not be a bad idea down the road.
Uh, in all reality, with, I mean, you know, I don't know how much a, a, a bus ticket would cost. Um, I mean, I haven't rode the, the mass transit, um, a long time, um, but with, with, uh, uh, the whole Uber and all the other stuff, they're, they're so cheap right now, um, they're so popular, even taxis are gonna fade, fade out. You can't even get a taxi to come up here to Rutland, and you pretty much have to call an Uber if you wanna get a ride, or somebody.
I've got the Karen Narwhal Uber, it works out well. All right, good.
I think it's a great start, and it'll be interesting to see how it turns out.
Maybe, let's see, let's see what kind of response.
Yeah. Hold it, are we done?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but we are?
Oh, man.
I love that.
Eight o'clock, too, wow.
Oh, good, the wife isn't, gonna have to call me.
I gotta call her and tell her.
Get the boyfriend out of the house.
Well, does anybody else have anything to come before the board?
I do not.
Nope. I do not, and I make the motion to adjourn at eight fifteen, second.
Any discussion?
Dick Williams, aye.
All in favor, yeah, Dick, aye.
Tim Narwhal, aye.
Sean?
Sean, more aye.
Marilyn?
Marilyn, aye.
All aye.
All right, good night, everybody.